Okay, I think we're called members of Planning Board meeting together from November 7th, 2022, 6:30. I have the public hearing for City Council petition 9.23, request to amend zoning ordinance pertaining to lot size requirement for a lot division in the residential A zone for lot size a minimum of 37,780 square feet.
The petition that went to City Council is here.
Then you pack it, okay? I'll talk on it, I'll open it, and then I'll open up the audience. What we found is there are, we've had a number of people come to us over the last couple of years, where they had a lot that was not an acre in size. They had frontages, but they couldn't subdivide it. So it ended up that you had, you had to stay with that sized lot. In the history of Lemester, back about 30 years ago, we changed the, or allowed, let's put it that way, to have open space where we actually have homes built on 12,000 square foot lots. And we have found with those 12,000 square foot lots, and with the open space also behind them, in most cases, it turned out to be fairly nice subdivisions. It wasn't detrimental at all to be building houses on smaller lots. With the problems that we have in today with housing and being able to get houses built, the city land is, availability is being depleted. So by changing this and going to this, if somebody's got a, you know, 87,000 square foot lot, or 37,000 rather, they can subdivide that as a second lot at 16,000. Now, that's still a little bit bigger than the 12, but it's halfway in between, it's smaller than the half acre that we require today. And I tried to do some research, I know I've looked at it, and I think there probably might be 50 lots in the entire city that would be affected, where people could build houses, if they chose to, you know, with the proper frontage and having that. So we thought that they, we made the proposal to the City Council, and see what, you know, see what transpires, and then led up the people to partake of the ordinance change. So, now that's the idea and the concept. Anybody got any comments? I'll open up the audience. No, I don't get anybody. I'll try one more time. Any comments from the audience? How about the board members?
John, do you happen to know how many lots fall into this category?
I lived on, I spent probably an hour on the GIS map, looking at it from overhead and trying to figure out frontages and sizes. My guess is probably 50 scattered around the city. Okay, so in what this would afford, somebody that's going to retire, or they are retiring, they want to take and make a new lot, and they're helping with the retirement, if they've got the frontage to be able to do that. So we're not backing down on frontages. We're not backing down on setbacks. They're all, they stay the same. It's just the total lot you end up with. So there are, you know, quite a few lots that are like that in the city. So we work out, my guess is about 50, and it's scattered around the city, so it wouldn't have much impact on schools or anything else, because it's, you know, it's widespread, it's not like a subdivision, you know, coming into one section. And a little bit better utilization of some of the land that we have. Yes?
For the right to Bill Hannigan, 71 Route 11, Drive in Lemester. I stepped in a little late, but I'm just kind of curious about why, where is this coming from to increase the lot size? All of a sudden it seems like...
No, it decreases.
Okay.
We're making, allowing a 16,000. If somebody has a large residential A lot, over the half acre, and they got 37,000, they get subtract off 16,000 and make a second lot. So it increases, not, it decreases, it gives some flexibility to the people in the city. Yes, ma'am?
It seems like this is far more likely to help developers than residences.
No, but what is it? It's a one-time deal, okay? And it's only for homeowners. So you can't, if you have to have a lot, and you can't take a subdivision and make a subdivision, you already can do that. A developer can take a subdivision, take a, if he's got a piece of property. Now, let's say there's 30 acres, just for the sake of 30 acres, and you could build probably 60 houses on 30 acres, just using half acre number, you know, because you could drive, you know, roads and stuff like that. Just run figure, just a figure. Now, we say, if you could do that on a grid, you could take and build 30 houses, that same 60 houses, okay, on the same 30 acres, but you could build them on 12,000 square foot lots. And the remaining space that you wouldn't use becomes open space. So that way, we have a number of, we probably got six or seven developments in town, where you have the open space. So this wouldn't, this doesn't open it up for developers at all, because the way it's written is that it's a one-time deal. Okay, and you can do it once.
Could you say your name and address for the...
Oh, sorry, Suntay Quinlan, 140 Lincoln Street.
Yep.
And Mr. Chairman, this is done by special permit.
And it's done by special permit in the planning board. Right.
So, so what, the right to Bill Hannigan, resident in Lemester. So this basically is, I read this as the way it's worded. It sounds like it's to change the RA district lots from half acre to 37,780?
RA special.
On a case-by-case.
So, so for example, if someone has, if someone happens to have a 40,000 square foot lot, and they can't get two lots, they could now do it with a special permit?
That's correct.
All right. So this really is for...
Very specific circumstances.
Right.
They can make, they can make another lot.
Right.
With their, and have the frontage.
Yeah. So they would have to, they would have to have the same, they would have to have at least 160 feet of frontage to get the second lot?
Correct.
Okay.
But really, it limits a lot, you know, a lot of them.
Right, no, I misread, I apologize. It does, it is, the way it's worded, it sounds like pertaining to lots, to lot size, and the RA district for lots sized a minimum of 37,780. But if the language of the ordinance is clear. And my opposition to it was going to be exactly what you said, was because of the fact that there's a lot of people, the housing need and that's usually huge. So to be able to do something like this, not that I have, I don't have a lot just like that, because I'm in the RA district. But it does, it does add some breedability for people who are entering retirement age.
Right.
Like Jeff, for example.
Jeff.
No, little limit to Jeff.
So like you said, you have to have a lot that has, you have to have, you know, you still have to get your 80-foot frontage. So you have to have 160, your frontage to do it. So, so I tried to look, and I looked like, I tried to the best I could, you know, and looking at the GIS map, and I looked at lot size and frontage, and tried to guess at the frontage, and I came up with around 40 to 50.
Does anyone have another question?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, sorry, it floated away for a second, it's back. So, do we have population density limits within Lemester, or within areas of Lemester? I'm thinking of North Lemester particularly, just because, I'm not sure if any of you live up there, but there are certain times of day I won't leave my house, because I have to sit in a light cycle for like literally three cycles to be able to...
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Okay. We have majority of residential, of North Lemester, I can speak to majority, okay, is residential A. Residential A is a half acre lot. Okay? That's right, there are some sections right on the lower end of Main Street, which are residential B, okay? Which are 12,000 square foot lots, which are smaller lots. Okay, and they're two-family homes. But we don't have residential A. The traffic for Route 13 is, that's the size of area to feed it, and people come out of New Hampshire, and they go into the, be surprised how many people come down that road and go and, you know, take the train out and into Boston.
Oh, I'm not surprised by that.
And so it's not just, it's not just North Lemester, it's also Pittsburgh traffic that's coming that way, so. But yeah, we do have restrictions. And then on the periphery, in the Prospect Street, Day Street, Pierce Street, I'm trying to think of other areas, those are rural residential, and those require one acre lots. Okay? So we do have, you know, restrictions on lot sizes throughout the city.
So, in North Lemester particularly, where are we at with our allowed population density versus the current population density?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know. Okay, I mean, that's one of the problems with Lemester. We're pretty, we're pretty well matched out throughout the city, and the homes that we have, okay? We would have to do some major changes in changing zoning primarily closer into the center of the city, to increase, you know, but that's one of the problems Lemester has, is that the homes and the lots that are left are, there aren't that many. And there are one here, one there, one there. There are no more, there's only one that I know of, let's call it large subdivision tract, that's left of a couple of hundred houses. Other than that, there's a few of 20, 25 tracts, but those, and that's it. So remember, one-third of Lemester is open space and is protected. So you get the show and farms, and all the land west of that, the whole hill up behind there, the sportsman's property, it's all protected land. Even the golf course is protected land. So the huge tracts, pretty much the one-third of the total Lemester's property is protected, and will never be able to build on.
But that's kind of my point, is that we're already, we already have all this traffic, and we have all these problems with, you know, the ability to get route to all these people traveling through here, not a lot of through streets, and we want to, you know, create allowances for additional subdivisions, specifically for development purposes, to increase the population areas where we don't really have the infrastructure to support that.
This is not a subdivision, ma'am.
It's not a subdivision.
It's not allowed with subdivision lots. To single lots, to single lot change, special permit through the planning board.
And it's limited to residence A, right?
It's limited to residence A.
But her questions are leading in an interesting direction as it pertains to this proposal, because was there a study done to say what lots are in what part of the city that would be, that would fall into this proposal? Are they all in North Lemester?
Oh, they're scattered. In fact, most of them are in South Lemester.
And when people come before the board, if this is going to be on a case-by-case basis, how do we, how do we tell one person that they can do it? Because we don't have population density versus another part of town where we can do it.
They're only going to do it if they need the criteria.
Yeah.
Have the frontage, have the space, and the setbacks.
Yeah, yeah, the setbacks.
If they, you know...
How many properties in North Lemester have 160 feet? No way, no. So that would stop all that.
Yep. But there are a few, but not a lot. Man, one of the, you look at limited density, and you're on limited traffic, and I appreciate that, I live in North Lemester also. So I run that Route 13, and been there for a long time. There's a fine balance all the time. And one of the problems that Lemester has is that we don't have a lot of housing. And it is a problem that we don't have housing. Because if you don't, you have to have growth for the city to be successful. Okay, you can't be stagnant, you can't start it. So you have, so what we try to do is manage the growth in a logical way. So by doing this, this helps the existing homeowner, okay, in specific residential A areas only. The lots, the larger subdivisions that are available are primarily in rural residential area with, with the rural farms and stuff like that that have been not used anymore. Okay, so those, that land is available. Primarily within the city, like I said, at the best, it's stretching, I think, it might be 40, maybe 50, but it's, that's the maximum numbers, and that's, but we have to show some growth. And so, yeah, we have to do some density, yeah, there's going to be a time that the, ourselves and the City Council are going to have to turn around and say, we're going to reduce some of the lot sizes, and we're going to have to allow high rises and stuff like that, because you can't be stagnant, you have to continue to grow. And once you're stagnant, your population, you're not, you're not going to have a successful city, whether it's here or anyplace else.
Not against growth, I've just always personally been of the opinion that redevelopment of existing areas of stagnation over development of protected areas is preferable. And I think based on our limited infrastructure, it would make sense to focus on that and focus on improving infrastructure before we pave the way to increase the amount of lots that can be developed on for residential purposes. The roads are already plugged up.
It's an argument for the City Council, I think.
It's an argument for the City Council.
Appreciate it. It's a good argument.
It's a good argument.
Not my jurisdiction is to...
This would...
Oh, no, we created it, so there's no...
It seems like this would, this would more benefit, you know, landowners who want to peel off a piece of their land to sell a house, as opposed to really addressing housing problems, right? Where we could maybe change zoning to allow for A to use, if we really want to address the housing problem, but that's not, but that's not good.
Well, I'm...
That won't fix your density issue either, right? That's the same.
But I'm also not sure how much this is going to help housing, because I think new houses that are being built right now, I think we're, you know, we're joking if we're going to say that's affordable housing, that that's, you know, for...
50 half-million dollar homes.
Right, exactly, that's, that's not for a lot of the population that's struggling to find housing right now. And so I think the people that are benefit, that are going to benefit from this are not going to be the people who are struggling for housing.
I didn't think that would, no, no, but they're not struggling. The people that own a home, the people that, what I'm saying is, they're going to be building a home now. I don't know what they're going to build for a home. Are they going to build a stata home, or are they going to build a McMansion? I don't know, okay? But they could be building just a, it could be, we're doing, for instance, let's say we have an older couple, they own a big house now, they've got the 160-foot frontage and the lot size, they can say, I want to downsize, I want to build a ranch. So they build, they take, they subdivide their lot, they build a small ranch on what's left, and they sell the big house. Okay, yeah, so you solve that problem, or you help that problem. You're just trying to be flexible and help people do some certain things. It's a small bit, it's not opening up any subdivisions, and it's a small number against the total of what we have in the city. We got a city of approximately 40, I think we're at 43,000 people. Okay, this is, when you're talking about 50, it's a small, very small number. Yeah.
Sorry. So I'm curious about why, why include the special permit provision?
Just to restrict it.
Control it.
Well, it's, to Jason's point, if you're going to, if you're going to, you're already kind of restricting it anyway, because you need that much frontage anyways, and you need that much area. I think if you, if you would do it as special permit, it might be that you do the second lot at 50 feet. So that you might have a few more people that could take advantage of it who are at that retirement age, you know, who want to build that house and different things. I'm not sure whether, how far down the road this process has gone, but...
Yeah, it's just starting, okay? Yeah, that's, you know, somebody could say that. You could do that with the second lot, have a small, you know, a 60 or 50-foot frontage, yeah. That's possible, but you still have 16,000 that would open up.
I think that that helps more people in the situation you're talking about.
It could. We open up a lot of options, you know, okay? And then, yeah, that could, that could very, well, we've proposed it. We went into the City Council, and the City Council wants to say, gee, you know, we like that idea, or even here, if we say we like that idea, we make the frontage on that special permit around the 80 feet for residential A, we're going to make that 60. Okay, we could do that, but you would still have to have the 16,000.
Right. But that, that helps out with that, to your landlord, because now the, I'm going to say 50, because now the lot width criteria goes from the frontage to the house.
Yeah.
It makes it a little bit easier for them to make that work, because usually if you have a big house on a lot, you have a direct front, your land, like, way on the back.
Right.
You know, so I think if we're going to try to, not that, I mean, it kind of is, you know, I'm involved with it a little bit, but...
It's how far I want it to go, and just try it, you know, and if it doesn't work, you always can change it, you know? It's a cool thing.
We're on our job last week.
Right.
We have, have at least, I mean, I would say at least 60 feet.
Yeah, that would be absolute minimum.
Right.
Okay.
And I know, I know ADUs was mentioned, which are additional dwelling units. Sterling did that, and that has turned out to be not what people expected it to be.
What did they do?
Good at that.
I think more negative. The intention was to be able to allow a similar situation. Did they get into, no change in lot area whatsoever, no, whatever the minimum lot size is, the minimum lot size, you can apply for a special permit for an additional dwelling unit. So it's one additional unit to put somewhere in the property. Okay? And so it has to be, like, it can't be any bigger than 750 square feet, you know, it can't be any more than one bedroom. I mean, so there are restrictions to it. So it was, it was meant for, I think the concept of the idea is good, but it was meant for, for example, if, if, you know, my father needs a place to live, I can build him the unit on my property without having him right in my house. I could have him, you know, in the back, you know, somewhere. That's kind of, it was, it was intended, intended to be like an in-law apartment, but detached.
Yeah, detached, right.
So...
Can we allow the in-laws?
And what happened in that, in that case? It turned into one to be abused, or...
Well, the one we worked into, the cost of the construction just got, the guy, the guy, I think it was partly was what he wanted to build, the construction cost got too much, and also they're on septics. So they had to build, you know, another septic for that and improve the old one. There's a lot of other factors on that, it's the one that I worked on.
You mentioned negative feedback, I thought you were talking about negative feedback from residents.
I think, well, I think the butters had some negative feedback, but that's not always unexpected, but it's an interesting concept, though.
Yeah.
The same thing would apply here if you...
Which it does, like, zero lot line.
You're next door to someone that has a 38,000 square foot lot, and all of a sudden they find out that they're going to have a house now 50 feet away where they didn't before.
Right.
You know, is it ever going to be happy?
So that, that actually, now, now, now that's why you're doing the special permits, because that way can be reviewed, yeah?
That's right.
Versus A and R.
And the butters are, I'm sure.
Yeah. So it's not automatic, you know, there are always, there are cases that, and this gives us a little control over it. Okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Can we move on to the...
One more question, ma'am, and then I'd like to move on.
Thank you. Where is the demand for this coming from?
Just general demand. It's, we've seen it, I've had a lot of people come to be looking for homes, the housing. I've read all kinds of articles, since there's a problem with housing. And just the general knowledge of knowing that for a city to grow, you have to have housing.
How many do you think are for developers?
We've had a number of companies come to this city that wanted to build in Lemester, and they didn't, because we didn't have the housing for the people to work here.
So it is for developers?
No, it's not for developers.
It's not for people building a house?
It's for growth, and I'm not going to argue with you.
For homeowners. I don't, I don't, see, in our, our definition of developer, anecdotally, is someone who has a large piece of land and are going to put in several units. We're talking about one lot that they want to split into two. And to me, that would be the owner of that lot who wants to probably put in a, we've said this a lot for maybe for other relatives, a child, themselves, to live on the same property with them. And even if they want to sell it to somebody else, I don't, in my opinion, that doesn't make them a developer, because they're developing one lot, not several.
People that buy these lots and then subdivide them to build on them?
They're not subdivided.
They're not subdivided, one lot.
It's one lot, it's this, we could, so Bill Hannigan here is saying, why make it a special permit, just make it as of right, which would be an A and R lot, approval not required, which is not a subdivision, that's why it's called an A and R lot. It's the, so, but with the special permit attached, that's going to give a butters the opportunity to come in, such as yourself, if it affects you, if you're considered a butter, to come in, to be able, to have an opportunity to be heard, to determine why or why not this lot should be, should be divided into two to be, to be sold as a second lot for another homeowner, or that same homeowner as well. So that's, that's the difference. If it weren't a special permit, they would come in with an A and R lot, we would endorse it if there's that requirement, and then they could build whatever they wanted.
Have you seen the word amendment?
I have not, I would love to, thank you.
But can we, can we move on to the...
I think I've had enough discussion. Does anyone else have any comment on this one? Okay. At this point, I, I think, planning board, do we want to make any? I just, on this, on the chat you did, yeah, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
You've got here the 175 frontage.
You're looking at, you're looking at R, you're looking at R.
We have to, which one will be tied?
Now you took...
We have to close the other one.
Did I look at the wrong one?
You're looking at the other one, you're looking at the one...
That's the one.
No, okay, I was looking at the wrong one. Sorry.
They were...
Okay, that's it, no. So that's, I read special, no, that's good.
So I moved to closing here?
Second.
Motion made in second to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carries. Okay, second one. There's a public hearing for City Council petition 1023, request to amend zoning ordinance pertaining to lot width requirement for lots in rural residential. What this one was, is this came off from an A and R that we had, actually went on Hobbit Street, went around the corner for me. And what happened there was, the, we require in our current zoning a frontage, and it's rural residential, 120, but a lot width, where you're going to put the house at 130. So you ended up with a lot in the front of 120, open to 130, and convoluted at an angle in the back, because it's still one acre. Then the second lot was sort of sandwiched in between, in 130, in a different location, and they still, it really was rather than just saying, it didn't, in my book, it didn't accomplish anything. in my book, it didn't accomplish anything. Rather than having a hundred and twenty four frontage, goes all the way back, and you place your house, you have your same setbacks, okay? And I couldn't, I, I did some, tried to do some research, and I couldn't find anything there where it said, in any planning documents, why the house with, should be wider, no, a smaller frontage and a wider footprint at, at the home. And it didn't make sense, in fact, it was just the opposite, and you ended up with all these convoluted lots, and it didn't change the lot sizes, it's just, well, the only thing I could think of when this was written, back in the late sixties, everybody was thinking about building long ranch houses, and I figured they had to be longer and wider, the front, rather than front and back. I, I couldn't figure out anyway, so I said, and just to clean it up, it says, well, just clean up, this, as far as I'm concerned, is a cleanup ordinance, just make the lines straight, and, and that's it, it doesn't reduce the lengths, the width, the width is, it'd be one twenty all the way back, and, but the lot, lot size is still an acre. So that's all this one is. Anybody got any question, open it to the audience on that one? Go ahead, go.
I think you've advocated it regularly, it's a title.
This young, this young lady is.
Yes.
Um, so would that increase the frontage requirement from eighty feet to one hundred and twenty feet?
It's one hundred and twenty now.
Okay.
It's one seventy-five if they're not sewed, and one twenty if they are, and they're one seventy-five if, it's a poultry farm that's not sewed.
So it, so it's reducing, so that's rural, or is that a setback?
Just, no, yeah.
Setback requirement?
The setback requirements stay the same. So you still have the same setback requirements, just that, I mean, how many houses are, you're gonna have fifteen feet on the side, so, so you still have ninety, ninety houses, ninety.
Building a palace.
What, you're building somebody's palace, exactly. So the palace would have to go back, a little more around, and all on the front. Okay, and that's, that's all, that's just a, that one is a cleanup, so anybody got any questions on that? Any comments, any comments from the board? Motion is in order.
Motion closed.
Second.
Motion made in second to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Motion carries. Okay, we go to the next one. Continued public meeting for site plan application for one-one-five Willard Street map, three-one-eight Posse One Trucking Terminal. And I'll open up the, the second one, the continued public hearing for special permit use, application one-one-five Willard Street map, three-one-eight Posse One Trucking Terminal. Desper's hand again.
For the record, go ahead with the hearing. Before we get too deep into this, we have, we have, we have a, a name member board, we, we had six members at the last meeting, and we don't have the same six members, Tony is not here tonight, just wanna know if, if everybody's up to speed on the.
Yeah.
On the, the ball rule, okay. At the last meeting, we decided to go out and do a site review, some of the members made the, the site review, kind of explained where things were going. We had, there was a question about whether additional screening was, was needed along this area when we went out there. This is heavily industrial, heavily industrial, heavily industrial, there's actually another industrial building located right here. So it was, the consensus, I felt anyways, consensus was that additional screening was not needed in those locations. We talked about traffic flow, we talked about the flow around the building and how, how the trucks would come in and out of the site, we, we talked about where the trucks would be during the end of the day, what times they would be coming in and out, we talked about hours of operation. So the hours of operation, basically, in general, the, the, the employees start arriving at the site around five-thirty in the morning, first trucks will be heading out shortly thereafter, the majority of the trucks will be heading out of the site between five-thirty and seven-thirty during, during the morning shift. Then from there in the afternoon, they kind of, some of them will straggle in a little bit earlier, but basically between two-thirty and, and five is really when they start coming back. And then most of the employees, if not all, will be exiting the site sometime around five, sometimes, you know, they might be hanging around finishing up some mechanics, but if finished up some work, they might be straggling as they go up to five-thirty. So that's the general flow of the, of the site and the operations. We were asked to provide a traffic review, which we had submitted, along with responses to the various comments, which we then updated per some of the comments that had come back during the process. Tonight, I have Heather Monica here from Green Peterson, who did the report, so first, if there are any questions about the items that, that we were involved with, be happy to answer those, and then from there, if there are any questions for Heather regarding the traffic, maybe she can just come up and give a summary of the traffic, so that the board can understand what's going on.
Okay, now we do the traffic.
So, good evening, for the record, Heather Monica with Green Peterson, and we did the traffic letter for the project, it dated October twenty-two thousand twenty-two, and it basically talked about trip generation of the site. Everything that Bill just explained is, is true, but I'll just explain it a little bit more. Existing of A and B tire commercial service had about eleven employees during the day, roughly twenty tractor trailers a day that they would service, and then about four tire deliveries a day. So that's what we base our existing conditions on, that's what we were asked to do for the letter, existing and then future conditions. Under future conditions, the A and B tire service part would be decreased a lot, only two employees on site with five to six tire deliveries that would be done with pickup trucks. So that left room for the E.L. Harvey business to expand and come on site. They're expected to have about seven on-site employees and twenty-seven operating trucks a day. They might have a few more on-site, obviously for breakdowns and whatever, but twenty-seven trucks should operate per day. So under the existing conditions, on a daily basis, there's about eighty-six trips in and out of the site, eleven during the A.M. peak period in the morning, twelve during the P.M. peak period. Under the proposed condition, on a daily basis, it increases to a hundred and thirty-one trips. Again, this is total in and out trips for the day. During the A.M., it goes to thirty-two trips during the A.M. peak hour and twenty-eight trips during the P.M. peak hour. So when you talk about the additional trips to the area as a result of, of this kind of change of use, if you will, it's forty-five additional trips a day, twenty-one additional trips during the A.M. peak hour, and sixteen during the P.M. peak hour. We looked at, that's about sixteen to twenty-one trips on the, on Willard Street a day, because, obviously because there's sixteen during the P.M. and twenty-one during the A.M., it's about one new trip every three minutes, two, two minutes and fifty seconds to three minutes and forty-five seconds, so three to four minutes. But of those trips, about ninety percent of them are expected to go towards one-seventeen to get access to Route Two. So when you look at that, we're probably, we're only adding, we only expect to add about nineteen trips during the A.M. peak hour and fourteen trips during the P.M. peak hour to that signalized intersection of Willard and, and.
Central.
Yeah, well, no, no, the other end, yeah, we don't expect to, really, like, ten percent of the traffic to head towards Central Street. There will be some, obviously, there's routes that go that way, but most, most.
Most of the traffic.
So we'll go out the other way, exactly. So what we found out doing this exercise is that our, our site peaks around six A.M. to seven A.M. in the morning, and about four P.M. to five P.M. in the afternoon, but based on some historical data that was available on Willard Street, closer to Central, but, but it's still on the roadway, Willard Street peaks around nine to ten A.M. and six, nine to ten A.M. and six to seven P.M. So the peak of the site is different than the peak of the street, so just goes to show we won't have, yeah, we won't be adding more traffic to that peak traffic on, on the roadway. So these, these increases of the, excuse me, the sixteen to twenty-one cars an hour during those A.M. and P.M. peak periods are expected to be negligible on, on the area roadways and intersections. That was the conclusion of our letter.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions, if any? No. Okay, I'll open up to the audience.
Yeah, I, I got a question for her, I live there, right on the coast. Did you see my yellow house when you did your walk?
Yes, I did.
I lived there, there's traffic all day long.
Can you state your name and address for?
Oh, oh, sorry, David Lima, one thirty-five Willard Street.
Thank you.
I'm a Butter, I'm an A Butter. He, uh, Joe's an A Butter, too, he, I don't think he was even notified about this, I had to go tell him.
Um, yeah, I, I, I can't, I can't comment on that, because we, what we do is we get a certified A Butters list from the, from the Board of Assessors, okay, and whoever they have as a Butters, then that's the list that goes down.
There's multiple Butters, they're not all residents, they're, they're businesses and stuff.
It, it goes to the owner of the property.
Okay, well, no, no one was told. I, I had to tell them.
Well, what I'm saying is, it, it goes to the owner of the property. If he's a renter, then it's, it's up to the owner of the property to tell them.
No, he owns it.
Yeah, okay, I, I can't argue the issue situation, because we do not, if you have an issue, then you would contact the, um, the assessors. But I think Elizabeth is about to, to check the list that we have, because.
What was her name?
First name is Joseph, last name is Seraphine. My land about C and B tires, and it goes parallel with Francis Street, goes all the way down, and it ends at Willard Street.
Is it residential property?
No.
No, it's industrial.
These radics are my house.
Is Francis Street passing by Francis?
Francis Street is their street up there.
Francis Street's okay.
It's up here.
Oh, here's Joe's right here.
Right there.
Your address wasn't on the certified list, so it might not be within the front, that's the requirement of three hundred feet.
Yeah.
Well, he's, he's.
It's worth the three hundred feet. Well, the Butts all the way down, so it's probably not three hundred, but it's a good couple of hundred feet there.
So they only report three hundred feet, that's what we're required to notify.
But of course, I do have something to say, I've, 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 I'm talking about this.
Can I, well, I mean, we can't do it, we can't, we can't, we can't talk about what their concerns are.
Okay, what is your concern, let's put it that way, no problem, you speaking.
I did go to the first meeting, so I don't really know what happened, and from what I just hear right now, you're concerned about traffic. But the biggest thing, of course, my concern, is there's gonna be trash on that property, which abuts my property all the time. It sounds like trash trucks are gonna be there all the time, I'm sure loaded with trash.
No, no, okay.
And that's something that I don't think is, I definitely don't want abutting my property.
Bill, please speak to that.
Yes, correct, Bill, we have a representative of E.L. Harvey here as well. So the trucks that come to the site don't have trash, they, they actually unload at transfer station in Pittsburgh, I believe, before they come to the site. So they don't, they're, they're, and we've stated right in our application, right in our letters, that, that there are no, no trash trucks on the property that will have trash in the hopper, okay? So they all come empty, and they have maintenance here, and then they leave empty and go through their rounds. There's also concern, they brought, the last meeting relative to odor, and Dave Jenner, who's with E.L. Harvey, he, he's brought some of the, of the, the deodorant they use in the back of the trucks, after, every single load gets dumped, they throw this stuff at the back of the trucks, and a few of the members were there to, to, to witness how, how powerful it is relative to how it's, the smell is much cleaner than trash, obviously. So that's addressed as well. So I believe that your concerns relative to them being trash trucks, they're not gonna be trash trucks full with trash, they're gonna be trash trucks that are empty as you get there, if they're for maintenance.
What was your address again?
I mean, when you're hauling trash, I can't see every truck making it to the transfer station every day before they close. And they're gonna, you know, I'm not gonna know an empty truck from a full truck, but I'm just, I can't see that happening.
You can have Mr. Jenner speak to that.
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, hear, you know, speak about that.
First, I'm being here, so you expect me, I'm Dave Jenner from E.L. Harvey. I understand your concern about the trucks coming back being full. We are able to dump various times of the day and various times of the night in Pittsburgh with our own facility. We do have Westboro as well as an end site to dispose of our, our trash and recycling. So at that time, we will never have vehicles coming back to our sites, being full. It's just not, not how we operate.
And that, that question has also been covered by the Board of Health, and that is a separate organization, which we monitoring them. So that's a.
Who's gonna be monitoring the trucks?
Well, it's up to the Board of Health. If you take, if the trucks, I think to say it would be you, and, and if the trucks aren't gonna back full, you call the Board of Health, and then they have jurisdiction to do something about it.
Well, that's what I mean, this is gonna end up falling on me, because I have the property right next to theirs, and that's the last thing I need to be doing while I'm running my own business, is worrying about trash trucks, you know, and everybody on my property is breathing trash into my building. It is a major concern, because trash over time can get you very sick, and there's a lot of, my daughter's very young, and gonna be there a long, long time, and that's something I don't want, you know, the people on my property subject to. That's my main concern. Traffic, all that, there's, traffic's traffic, that's not a big deal. Trucks going out of there all day long, that's not a problem at all, but trash could be a big, big problem.
And, and I, we agree with you. So not only we have to, we, we put it in their, their approval, okay, that, that, no, no trucks there, and then with trash, and also, like you said, the Board of Health would be, they check periodically, it's not just up to you, but if there's a problem, then, then they're notified, or they can buy and check, they, they do, they do go around different places and check. So I'm not totally aware of everything that the Board of Health does, but I do know they do go around checking different places. So it's.
I would just add, I heard, you know, this is a company that, it's not a fly-by-night organization, they've done all of these types of things, and this hasn't been.
No, no, I mean, I, in my dumpster, I rent from them also, that's, I do business with them, too.
I think that we can accept to their word that they.
You can pack them next to your house if you want.
I get Walmart.
But that's my major, that's my only concern, of course, is trash.
And flies and rats.
And everything that goes with it.
Even if they're empty, they're still gonna smell them. And they're not gonna clean them, I can guarantee you that.
Okay. You didn't bring the smelling salts, was he, did you? It's a distraction, okay.
You could, you could attest to that, that.
Oh, yeah. It, it is, there is a, a deodorant, a deodorant, deodorant, that they, that's pretty powerful.
Let them stay where they are, they're ready parked.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I may have missed it, but why was this gentleman who is in Director Butters not notified?
Um, the, the certified list that we got, it doesn't encompass the three hundred, what is your exact address?
I'll let, let it touch you. It was right next to the property.
Did you check on the list now?
Right there.
Oh, yeah, so a letter was sent out.
Okay, yeah.
Twenty-seven Garfield Street?
Yep.
Probably for the trust, yeah.
Oh, S and S Realty Trust?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so a letter was sent out.
Yeah.
Not, not a big deal. So where would the trucks be parked, say, you know, when they come in at night and?
You weren't here for the first part, so I'll go through the presentation. So, so basically, this is the driveway that's there right now. We would be, there's a bunch of containers in this area here, along with some, some storage of tires right here, that would all go away. And this would be employee parking in this area here. So all the vehicles would come in to the site. There, there's employee and customer parking on, on the front of the building, that's gonna be reconfigured, and so all the vehicles would come in the site and drive around the back, okay, the trucks. They would, in the morning, the, the, the employees would come in and would, would park in various areas around the property. And then they would get in the trucks and they would, they would exit out this, this same driveway.
You want to take over that while you're explaining that?
Yep. I'm going to be parking here, too.
They're going to be parked on the other side.
Okay. Do you want to get this on there, too?
Yeah.
Right. So, um, the trucks at, at night...
So this is his entrance right here, so my property...
This is your entrance, this is your driveway right here.
This is my driveway right here, so my property is right over here.
Correct. So the, the trucks, the, the employees would come in, they park in the employee parking, they get in the trucks, which is going to be parked in this area here and this area over here, as well as along the back here. And then they would leave out through the property. They, some of them, um, might leave this way. Uh, but when they come back, they come back in and right now the plan is to send them around this way and kind of stack them this way and then leave an opening for the rest of them to get back in here. So that, we have enough space for 30, um, uh, vehicles on the site because some of those vehicles, if they need repairs, they're going to have another vehicle to go up to do the daily, the daily shift.
Yeah.
Okay. So really, that's, that's it. The trucks actually will be over here, more away from you than next to you. These will be all employee parking.
So there won't be trucks all against that property line?
No, that's all employee parking. There it goes. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's a major concern.
Yeah.
Trash is a major concern.
So, which is why we brought the people of E.L. Harvey here to make sure that they were, that that could be addressed.
And that's written into this agreement or it's something I didn't see or...
I think it's, it'll be, it'll be a condition of approval. The plan, the plan gets approved relative to the location of where everything's going to go.
Mm-huh.
The operational aspects of things relative to no truck shall have trash in the back of them at the end of the day, that's a condition of approval. Or, or a limited issue will be utilized in each truck each day, that's a condition of approval. It's operationally, that's what they do anyways, but this board can put that in as a condition of approval to make sure you're protected.
Why do you have time every day to deodorize your trucks?
Yeah, every time they dump out and fuel up, they throw a, a supplement. In a barrel right next to the fuel station.
Do I have any other questions? About board members?
Does the, um, does the Board of Health have the power to shut them down? If they think, if they think...
If they don't comply?
Yep, they do.
Yeah. They have extensive...
I'm sure they comply.
Yeah.
I mean, I live right next to the place.
They wouldn't, yeah, it's not, they, you know, I'm sure there'd be a number of, they'd be hearing or there'd be some, I'm not sure what their procedure is.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'm just, I'm sorry. Uh, but I know they have procedures to, anytime somebody doesn't follow, follow through them, they follow the procedure, they'd have a hearing.
I know they're not going to clean the trucks. I, I know that.
Um, we don't, we don't...
Just to be clear, they're, they're not saying they're going to clean the trucks. What they're saying is that the trucks are going to be emptied and then deodorized at the end of each, um, each time they, they fill. That's not explaining it.
They're not saying...
We're not saying we're going to clean.
They're not saying they're going to clean it.
I know you're not going to clean. Nobody does.
Nobody does.
I know that.
Okay, let's, let's move on. Just one quick question. Where are they going to deodorize the trucks?
When they dump.
When they... At the dump.
You're correct.
At the dump. So that wouldn't be on Francis Street at all, over there. They want to be deodorizing over there.
We could. It's, it's just a powder, but we don't.
Are you sure the powder is closed, right? There's, there's no, there's no truck traffic that's anticipated from this site to even go on Francis Street unless it's operationally going maybe to pick up their trash and dump it. So they, the, the problem...
I really mean to say Francis. I was just...
I mean, it's a good example.
I meant to say on their property or at the transfer station.
Exactly. At the transfer station.
You don't want the truck flying around next to you.
Yeah. Okay. What happens from here?
Uh, we will, we will have a, we will take and, uh, we'll close the hearing. And then when we close the hearing, the board will discuss it later on. And, uh, and we will vote and we'll decide on what conditions there are with that. That's later on in the meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
It's two.
Yeah, it'd be two. First, for the, uh, the public meeting.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public meeting uh, for 115 Willard Street, map 318 Posse One Trucking Terminal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
And then move to, to, to close the public hearing.
Uh, special permit.
Special permit.
Okay. Uh, motion made to close the special permit use. Application for 115 Willard Street, map 318 Posse One Trucking Terminal. Any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Hearing is closed. Go to our regular meeting, roll call, please.
Patrick Carla.
Here.
Paul Weiser. South Chikoni excused, Carvatore Oso.
Here.
Tom Kergen.
Here.
Jason Parren.
Here.
Dean Ballier.
Here.
John Sisler.
Yeah. Uh, called out of minutes.
No.
September 19.
The only thing I noticed is that. It says that Carol's absent, but then it says that she... She... That's, that's...
I can do that.
I destroy Carol. I was not here until the 19th.
You're wrong.
Besides, I'm...
I was.
Hi, you can update that.
Besides, I will. I will.
Good job.
Make a motion to approve, which means we have to change.
For the change.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve with the change. Any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. As amended. Okay, October 3rd, 2022 minutes.
Look, Watson. So, Mr. Susan presided as the acting chairman for the... That's the only question I have.
Yeah.
This is the 24th?
This is October 3rd.
Maybe he just presided as chairman.
Unless you got the motive, I don't know. It says, Mr. Susan was there. But then the first, under notes, it says, Mr. Susan...
Yeah, no, I was here.
I think that's, so I would probably just delete.
Okay.
The sentence would be acting, um...
Do I have a motion to approve?
With that, one change.
So one change?
Yeah.
You were listed as acting chair.
Just, just as, say, Mr. Susan presided as chairman for the...
Five.
We're going to take it out. Oh, as the acting chair. Oh, I see that. I missed that. All in favor, say aye.
With the change.
Yeah.
With, with the amendment. All opposed, no. Motion carries. October 24th.
Uh, do you two accept the...
Yeah, well...
That was, that was the site plan.
That's the site plan. It's really... Yeah. So that's the site one. We still have to have that, so we have to, you know, because it was... Um, it's, it's here.
Do you, you have a motion to accept, all right?
Yes.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Okay, no new plans. Opened a site plan application for 15 Willard Street, map 318 Posse One Trucking Terminal. Okay. Uh, do I have any conditions?
Well, the first one is they have to be empty when they come back tonight.
Uh-huh. All trucks shall be empty prior to entering, uh, lot.
No idling.
Okay.
And deodorized.
And the trucks shall be deodorized. And no idling. Well, I think that's... In the winter, that, do we get set a time on that? No idling after nine o'clock at night and six in the morning? Or what's your operation? Do you start the trucks early in the morning because of cold weather?
Uh, yeah, two point, yes.
They're approximately what time? So there'd be trucks idling?
Yeah, they're, they're not, they're not going to be idling more than 15 minutes. Next.
So with that, what time would that start? Six, 5:30?
5:30, 5:30.
5:30?
Maybe just no, no idling more than 15 minutes.
Yeah, that's idling 15 minutes. And then how about at night?
No idling at night.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and you know, during the day, about 15, okay, idling...
What's, what the latest they're going to be there?
What's that?
I mean, what, during the day? I mean, is it five o'clock or six o'clock?
Six?
Yeah. Operationally, yes.
You're not going to be there at nine o'clock for your truck.
You hope not.
It says the general hours are 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Okay. Idling shall be restricted to 15 minutes. Okay. Uh, anything else?
Were there any department?
That's what I'm going by.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
I don't figure what I didn't say.
Just the trucks that the police were saying was riding with them.
I thought we took care of those earlier in the original meeting. But there wasn't much of traffic to study.
You can go through the request if you want.
Yeah, go through it, please.
Um, the fire department approved. The, um... Board of Health says trucks must be periodically cleaned to reduce odors. No idling, noise complaints. Exterior needs a good cleanup, lots of loose trash along Willard Street, excessive tires being stored outside. More collection tires leads to mosquito breeding. Prefer tires to be stored in a container or outside.
And that's existing conditions.
Um, TPW says he has approves. Assessor approves. Police Department says, please conduct a public impact study. If the building is alarmed, please list the contact information for responsible party available 24/7 with the police department. Building Department approves.
Then conservation was there.
Um... Conservation says I would rather see the lemon tree is normally required per number of parking spaces, but it's required to be weighed, low shrub planting supplies. And a reminder that there are two waiver requests.
What was that last one?
There's two waiver requests.
Okay.
So when you get to that, I'll help you.
Okay, I'll take care of the conditions first and we have waivers have to... Okay, we got, so it's right see, I got three waiver, uh, three conditions, that trucks will be empty, uh, they be deodorized and idling for 15 minutes. Uh, do we have any waivers?
Yes.
Uh, conditions also, any other conditions would be from department heads.
We will.
I don't think we had any.
Nope, that's it.
Okay, waivers.
Uh, section 22-52.8.1 pertaining to the landscape tree count. And section 22-62.3.1 pertaining to the apartment that the landscape plan be prepared by a licensed landscape architect.
Okay. Well, those require votes, I'll vote those. Okay. Do I have anything else? So I'll start with the waivers. Um, first would be on the waiver, requires a vote to reduce the, the number of trees on the site.
22-52.1.
Uh, would you approve that waiver?
Motion made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. The second one is a waiver to not require a landscape architect. Okay?
Move to adopt that as well.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Okay, on the conditions, three conditions. First one is that trucks shall be, uh, be empty on the site. Okay, the second condition is that they be, uh, deodorized off-site. The third, idling be, uh, for 15 minutes, maximum 15 minutes. Okay, take that some body. Uh, then we have a motion?
So...
So a motion by Carol, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote.
Wait, wait, one pause, one second. Did we do an individual vote on the waivers already?
Yes.
Yeah.
On the waivers, we did.
We got it.
Not on the conditions.
All right, we're good.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. On the plan with conditions and waivers. Do I have any discussion? Any additions or deletions? Here and now, the motion is in order to accept the plan with waivers and conditions for a site plan, site plan application.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded to accept a plan, uh, site plan application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. For the special permit use, this is allowing a truck operation, uh, in that area. Okay, so that's the reason for the special permit.
We should, um...
And that's a roll call.
Should we... Should we include the same waivers and conditions to that?
Yes.
On the special permit, yes.
So individual vet on waivers and then...
Yeah, the waivers and conditions, uh...
So I move to allow for the waiver of the, um, the landscape requirement.
Second.
Okay.
22-52.8.1.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. Landscape. Uh, any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Landscape architect. This is on the special permit.
I move to waive that, move to allow for the waiver of that.
22-62.3.1.
Motion, okay, to, for the waiver on the landscape architect. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both say no. Motion carries. Uh, conditions, uh, as previously read, stated. Uh, on empty trucks, deodorizing and idling.
I move to, um...
Accept.
Accept those conditions as part of the anticipated approval of the plan.
Second. Motion made and seconded to accept the conditions. Any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. And this is a roll call.
For the waivers.
Because it's special permit.
Conditions.
This is just the conditions, so...
Uh, oh, that's on, it's on the waiver. No, it's the special permit, okay, yeah, that's on the conditions.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. On the special permit with waivers and conditions, it's a roll call.
Patrick Carla. Patrick Carla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
South Chikoni excused, Carver Toreosol.
Yes.
Tom Cargan.
Yes.
Jason Parren.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Sizel.
Yes. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Be good neighbors to your neighbors.
Absolutely.
You're all trying to run businesses and live there, so.
Right. Nice a lot.
Okay, new business. City council petition, nine dash two-three request from Menzo on pertaining to lot size.
He did a very good job.
Best I've ever seen you.
Just remember, I get paid by the hour, so. Can I brew you a beer?
You did that since the last time I saw you.
I'll see if my legs will.
Don't give away. Okay. On the city council petition on the, uh, lot size requirement was for residential aid. Any discussion on that, or do we want to change anything? Do we want to?
No, I think it should be, I mean, Mr. Hannigan brought up a good point, but then I think that's a concern, especially with our young friend here who should have a right to be heard when they come in, if there's an abutment. So I think it should go in as a special permit.
Okay.
So I, I make the motion.
I think, I think the one question he made was, uh.
You're saying that.
That the.
Frontage.
That the frontage, uh, be reduced.
I think it's probably good, like you said, we can re, we can come back and address this if it turns out that maybe people are interested in theirs.
Either that or, what I was thinking, if, if that came up, then, then we always go back to the ZBA.
Right.
And the ZBA can waive the frontage.
We're only letting those cut their cotton in half.
Yeah.
So.
So let them, leave it the way it is and let the city council see what they want to do.
So I make them see what happens with it.
Where are we with this in the process now? Has it gone to the city council?
It went, we, they recommended.
It's the year of.
It went to the city council.
November twenty-eighth is their hearing.
Uh huh, then they, they, they get it, they return it to us, to all of the departments.
So we get to the point where we can still amend it before we put it in bottom?
Yeah, we can, we can make a recommendation to change anything here, okay? And then if we, something comes up, because we have a hearing and it's open, uh, to people, a, a resident made them up with a ballot. Are recommended for change, so then at that point, we, we could accept that and, and change it and bring it back to the city council with the change. Okay, so now we'll go back to the city council and just say November the twenty-eighth is their meeting?
Yes.
I think that's.
Uh, November twenty-eighth, yes, correct.
And so it will be on their agenda on the twenty-eighth.
So I move to recommend approval to the city council.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to recommend approval to the city council.
As presented.
Uh, just as presented, yes.
Okay, any discussion on that? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. City council petition, ten twenty-three, request of Menzo on pertaining lot width requirement for lots in a rural residential zone. Just on the, the chart there, as I was looking at the chart, I want to get the right one here. I haven't seen it before, but. Too many papers here. On the not sure, one seventy-five. You got one thirty and you got that crossed out. Was that one thirty in there or was that?
Yeah, I guess. I'm going to double check it, but I think it was.
Because that, that lot width should be. We require a one seventy-five frontage, that should be one, that should be one seventy-five.
You're right. No, um, this might be another type of that carryover, but it, it was under, under that, it wasn't one thirty.
Yeah, so that one thirty should be changed to one seventy-five.
Yeah, I agree. And then one tw- because that's what I was confused about. What about the last one?
Okay.
That was one thirty and it's proposed one twenty? And the lot frontage is one seventy-five?
It should be one seventy-five. See, and, and you don't have sewer, you got just a one in that.
Um, here's the chart.
You got the frontage.
They're just not popping right.
Yeah, it, it. It didn't kind of paste, maybe.
Oh, that's why it's, it's one here, so it's forty.
Three, five, sixty, one eight.
Not, not sewer is forty-three, five, sixty. Pig poultry is two seventeen, eight, and what's the not sewer, sewer is, oh, it's the same for both. Not sewer and sewer is the same minimum lot area, forty-three, five, sixty.
Okay.
And then the lot frontage is one seventy-five. But the original lot width.
See, they did the same thing, the one seventy-five to two hundred.
Yeah.
So you're going to change that two hundred.
It looks like the column didn't carry over. It looks like the one.
Yeah, so, oh, that's all though, that doesn't apply, that's all. So not sewer is one seventy-five.
And then they guess.
The lot frontage is one thirty for the, for su, for both sewer and not sewer. So it should be.
One twenty.
One twenty for sewer and one seventy-five for not sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then pig and poultry.
So this should be one twenty. So that's a one seventy-five. The pig and poultry should be one, should be one seventy-five.
Yes, but pig and poultry also is not sewer and sewer, and it's one se, it's the same, one seventy-five or one twenty.
One twenty, so very one one seventy-five.
No.
We could.
But we don't.
But it's in the ordinance, so we need another column, sewer.
Yeah.
Get rid of the cars, go with the pigs, that's the future.
Yeah, so, so this is going to be, this is going to be one seventy-five. This is going to be one seventy-five. Right here.
Not sewer is one se, right, and then sewer for poultry and pig.
All the sewers should be one twenty and all the non-sewers should be one seventy-five.
Right.
And then of, of the lot width, this is so confusing, the way have, they have this ordinance, not what we're proposing now. But the sewer, the sewer is, the lot width is one thirty with a lot frontage of one twenty, but we want to make it one twenty, no?
Exactly, right.
Okay.
One twenty.
Okay.
So you can.
So that's that sewer, one twenty, and that should be one twenty.
Right.
So the only change on this is the one seventy-five.
Well, then, then you need, do you mind? Then you need a sewer for. So we have not sewer. Four, three, five, sixty. One seventy-five, one seventy-five sewer, four, three, five, sixty. One twenty, one twenty. Then we have the poultry and pig farm, not sewer. Two seventeen, eight hundred, one seventy-five, one seventy-five. Then we have to do the sewer. Which is.
One twenty.
One twenty and one twenty.
One twenty.
So I make a, unless there's more discussion, I make a recommendation.
Do you have a.
To recommend approval as.
As corrected.
Amended, yeah.
As amended.
Second.
And all we did was made some corrections up, so that they matched up.
I mean, if it's easier, Elizabeth, I can just write in.
Any discussion?
Oh, don't write in, because it's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Here and now, a call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Do we have any communications?
Communications?
New applications?
No communications. Director's report. This is a carryover from the summer when we had Cooper helping us. We put in, um, staff work together with Cooper and we've got new applications to. For site plan and special permit. There's a copy of them in their packet. Um, the board wants to look these over. Um, and provide comment. We're happy to hear feedback. Um, if you're fine with these, we'll get them posted on the website. And, um, big thing was the fees was changed for special permits, and we re, we had that fee increase this summer, two fifty, we needed to update that. And the dates on the applications were very antiquated, that needed to be updated. And there was some information on the forms, the old forms that we don't really use, so we took that off and everything that we use is relevant or near.
So we have new forms?
Yes, they're in the packet.
Okay.
And a checklist. We'd like to add respect to this number first.
That sounds good.
If I could just say one.
Do we?
We're still working on, um, subdivision. Yeah, we're, we're, we're working on updating all our forms, but these are the first two that are putting.
What about modifications to either site plans or?
Deviations.
Deviations, yeah.
Yeah. That's one that we need to know. I think we need a checkup box.
Okay. Do you need a vote on this?
No, it, it can be administered. So on this, I'll take me back. Your site plan or modified site plan? And then when we do the subdivision, we'll make.
Oh, I see it now.